Welcome each of you present and watching. Our quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin this meeting with an invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Jenkins Elementary School. Arianna Martin and Jacob Reynolds. First, Arianna will come forward and deliver the invocation. She will be followed by Jacob, who will come forward and deliver the pledge. Arianna, would you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before we get started?
Good evening, Dr. Kilgore, Chairman Hunter, and the members of the school board meeting. Thank you for this good opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Arianna Martin. I'm a fifth grade student at Jenkins Elementary Schools. I enjoy gymnastics, math, and participating in our after-school We Leap Saturday program. I would like to open this evening's meeting by honoring our superintendent, Dr. Kilgore. It is because of Dr. Kilgore's work that I am an honorable student, a president at Jenkins Jaguar Student Ambassador, and a member of the Jenkins Step Team. We are college, career, and citizen-ready at Jenkins. This evening, I will be reading an acoustic poem dedicated by Dr. Kilgore. Coverts make acoustic by choosing an adjective for each letter of a person's name. Kilgore. K: knowledgeable. I: innovative. L: loyal. G: generous. O: optimistic. R: responsive. E: energetic. Kilgore.
That's good. That's very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jacob, will you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself before we begin the pledge?
Hello. Good evening. Mr. Erma and Hunter are Dr. Kilgore and school board members. I am Jacob Reynolds. I am in first grade at Jenkins Elementary School. I enjoy writing stories, playing on the computer, and spending time with family. When I grow up, I want to be in the Army. Please stand for the prayer allegiance.
I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Arianna and Jacob. That was wonderful. I loved the poem for Dr. Kilgore. And Jacob, I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna be like a drill sergeant or you're definitely gonna be a general because you would hit that command. I'll tell you that. A first grade? I couldn't do that when I was in the first grade. Thank you for participating in tonight's meeting, and you both did just a wonderful job supporting Arianna and Jacob tonight or their family and school family. Would you please stand to be recognized? And the board appreciates the encouragement you have given these two young students, and we thank you for bringing them to the meeting this evening. Thank you again. Can we have another round of applause for those students? I believe they also have another presentation. Is that correct? Please come on. Should we have Dr. Kilgore please come down to front?
I have a book. Thank you all very much.
Again, thank you. That was a wonderful gift. We'll continue down with the agenda. Let's see. Next, I guess we'll have board recognitions. And before we get started, I want to recognize two individuals that were in the room. I know I did see Councilman Mr. Harris. Is he still here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there he is in the back. And also out there in his sheriff outfit is former Vice Mayor, Mr. Robert Coleman. Thank you for joining us here this evening. We're gonna move on, and I guess next is board recognitions.
It is. Tonight, we're gonna honor our schools and teachers that work with financial literacy across our high school students. And we've got also a very special employee that won a first for Newport News Public Schools. So we have two big things to honor tonight. So Ms. Price is gonna help us, and you and I are gonna go down front.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to present this month's recognitions. Ensuring that young people are financially literate is paramount to prepare them for future financial success. Two of our recognitions this evening showcase the district's success in this area. Working in Supportive Education, or WISE, is an educational organization dedicated to building financial literacy, fostering business and social entrepreneurship, and preparing students for college and the global workplace. The organization's literacy certification program provides high school students with financial education and the opportunity to become certified financially literate. Students learn more about personal finance, and then they take the WISE standardized financial literacy certification test. This evening, we are pleased to recognize a Newport News High School that is named a 2016-2017 Blue Star School for its students' successful performance on the WISE Financial Literacy Certification Test. Please join me in congratulating Woodside High School. Accepting this recognition on behalf of the Woodside community are Lead Teacher Tina Shorter and Educator Stephen Brown. Would you please come forward? And also Principal Jonathan Hockman. Would you come forward, please? In order to earn the WISE Blue Star School designation, a school's students must have an 80% pass rate on the literacy certification test, with either a majority of the students at a given grade level taking the test, or an average score of 85% or higher by students who take the test. This national standardized test is administered to students at the end of the personal finance course. Students who pass the test receive a financial literacy certification. Please share our congratulations with your students and your staff. You're welcome. Blue Star Schools were recognized at the organization's annual Money Power Conference for Financial Literacy last month in New York. Our next honorees have also earned recognition through the WISE Financial Literacy Program. As educators who teach the Career and Technical Education Course in Personal Finance, they are striving to ensure that their students develop the skills for lifelong, successful financial decision-making. Eight Newport News educators have been named 2016-2017 Gold Star Teachers because at least 93% of their students and at least one of their classes passed the WISE Financial Literacy Test, which is also a Virginia Board of Education-approved certification. They're joining us this evening. Please join me in congratulating, from Heritage High School, Lanice Cowling. From Minchville High School, Adrian Caldwell. And Stephanie Walton, who's also part of the team at Minchville, but she was unable to join us this evening. From Warwick High School, Kimberly Grant. And our Gold Star Teachers from Woodside High School, Stephen Brown. And Tina Shorter. The Virginia Standards of Learning for Economics and Personal Finance requires instruction in economic concepts, and teachers have to help students develop thinking skills that include economic reasoning, decision-making, and problem-solving. High school students have to meet a state requirement to complete a one-credit economics and personal finance course prior to graduation. With the help of these dedicated educators, our students are not only satisfying that graduation requirement, they're earning state and national certification. These dedicated educators were also recognized at the Money Power Conference held last month. Thank you for equipping our students with the tools and the skills they need to become college, career, and citizen-ready. While they're making their way back to their seats, I'd like to ask that their family members and friends who joined them tonight, would you please stand to be recognized? And also like to acknowledge their administrators, Shamika Gerald from Heritage, Bobby Suri from Minchville, and Jonathan Hockman from Woodside High School. And the Division's Career and Technical Education Supervisor, Tonette Owlen. Thank you for joining us tonight. The Virginia School Plant Managers Association is a professional organization for school facility managers. The organization serves as a source of information on emerging facility management matters and offers professional development and industry networking opportunities. This year, the organization offered its inaugural Plant Manager of the Year Award to recognize one of its own who's made great contributions to the profession. Newport News Public Schools is home to the first honoree. Please join me congratulating Wade Beverley, the Virginia Plant Manager of the Year. Mr. Beverley has worked for Newport News Public Schools for more than 20 years in various roles in the Plant Services Department, and now serves as the Maintenance Supervisor. Mr. Beverley has streamlined many of the operating practices in the department. He developed and staffed the landscaping shop, implemented changes across the department that led to new positive culture changes based on the Disney leadership philosophy. He's also supervised wetlands drainage projects, among many other things. One of his most notable accomplishments, though, was leading a safety program that led to Newport News Public Schools becoming the first school division in the state to become OSHA-compliant. Mr. Beverley will represent Virginia and is now eligible for the National School Plant Manager Year of the Award, Plant Manager of the Year Award, which will be announced in March, so we know you're gonna bring that home too, to Newport News. Again, congratulations on this honor. Tonight, we also have one final recognition that's not listed on the agenda. It's bittersweet, though. In October, our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Ashby Kilgore, announced her retirement. This evening, the school board is honoring this visionary for her dedicated service. She's being presented with a resolution, and I'm gonna take a moment to read it. Newport News, the Newport News School Board presents its Resolution of Recognition to Ashby C. Kilgore, Superintendent of Schools. Whereas Ashby C. Kilgore has made outstanding contributions to public education for over 45 years, including serving the students of Newport News Public Schools as a principal, assistant principal, deputy superintendent, and finally Superintendent of Schools for 10 years. And whereas Dr. Kilgore is the longest-serving Superintendent of Newport News Public Schools since its consolidation with Warwick County in 1958. And whereas, under her leadership, the Newport News Agenda for Public Education was created to guide the school division's future and evaluate student results. And whereas, through innovative leading and learning, Dr. Kilgore guided the school division's efforts to increase academic performance and open doors to unique opportunities for all students. And whereas, Dr. Kilgore leaves a legacy of accomplishments, including a record-breaking graduation rate and dropout rate, which surpasses the state averages, comprehensive career pathways and youth development initiatives that have transformed the school division, a STEM culture that is preparing all students for opportunities in these career fields, and a college, career, and citizen-ready curriculum to ensure that all students are prepared and ready for future careers. And whereas, Dr. Kilgore is the architect of Spark, the summer program for arts, recreation, and knowledge, the region's first public day-long summer program, the early college program, and the early career program, now therefore be it resolved by the Newport News School Board that Ashby C. Kilgore, EDD, is to be highly commended for exemplary service, dedication, and commitment to the citizens of Newport News, and congratulated on her retirement. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the minutes of this meeting for all to see and acknowledge. In witness thereof, we've here to set our hands this 19th day of December 2017. The resolution has been signed by all members of the school board. I'd also like to know that, notice that Dr. Kilgore is also receiving another gift in recognition of her dedicated service. That Mr. Ashby is holding there?
Look at that. That's beautiful. Oh my goodness. Epic.
So would you please join us in congratulating Dr. Ashby Kilgore on her service to this Thank you. We had to take a little privilege. It's her last school board meeting, so again, it's a little bittersweet.
It is. It is. I'm going to say now?
Thank you. And again, we wish congratulations to all of tonight's honorees. This concludes the recognition portion of our meeting. At this time, we're gonna take a six-minute break so that our honorees and their guests may leave if they choose to do so. Dr. Kilgore has to stay for the meeting. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight. So we'll stand in recess for about six minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm proud of you. I went with the focus here. Yeah. Okay.
Newport News Public Schools is thankful for the dedication and bravery of our servicemen and women. Veterans Day is the perfect time to celebrate these heroes. Schools also celebrate November as Military Family Appreciation Month to recognize the sacrifices families make for our great country. Students and staff were excited to honor the service of our military, while a few generous sailors were more than willing to continue serving. At Lee Hall Elementary, veterans were invited to a breakfast in their honor. Students and staff thanked the special guests for their service through a delicious meal. Greenwood Elementary also honored veterans with a breakfast. Principal Kamisha Davis, who is married to a retired sailor, thanked the honorees for their devotion to our country. Students and staff lined the hallways, holding banners and flags, as the veterans paraded through the sea of patriotism. Many parents and grandparents made time to visit their students' classrooms, talking about their experiences serving in different branches of the military. And sailors from the aircraft carrier Abraham Lincoln spent their Veterans Day serving in our schools. The Lincoln had just returned from an underway conducting carrier qualifications and training, and spent time in September providing humanitarian relief for those affected by Hurricane Irma in Florida. Still, many sailors were happy to volunteer at 10 elementary and early childhood centers in Newport News. Some sailors read to classrooms or answered questions about their careers in the Navy, their favorite food on a carrier, and interesting countries they visited. Thank you to all veterans for their past and continued service to make our communities and America great. This past summer, Newport News Public Schools offered more opportunities for in-depth learning. Spark Camps allowed rising third through eighth graders to enroll in one- or two-week-long enrichment camps to develop academic knowledge, explore career fields, and gain valuable 21st-century skills. Eleven different camps were offered. The cost for each camp was completely free of charge and included transportation and meals. Spark Camps bridged the weeks from the end of the regular Spark Summer Program and the start of the new school year. Each immersive experience allowed students to gain critical thinking skills, work in collaborative settings with peers, and build valuable leadership traits. From working with cutting-edge technology in Virginia's only small lab learning environment to exploring the natural environment all around us, campers had a variety of options to choose from. In various camps, students could design a dream community through creative arts, explore the value of diversity, build self-confidence through art and music, explore the fossils of Virginia's past, and learn conflict resolution as future leaders. Many local organizations and community partners offered resources to help students grow as knowledgeable and contributing citizens. By participating in Spark Camps, 846 students spent their summer growing and learning, enriching their futures through partnerships and unique extended learning experiences only offered through Newport News Public Schools. Students who maintain perfect attendance and exhibit great behavior in class have the ingredients for a winning recipe. As a reward, 39 students from McIntosh Elementary were invited to cook up their own unique and delicious lunch. Bright futures for students begin with good school attendance. Growing to class every day helps children feel better about school and themselves. The attendance and positive behavioral interventions and supports team at McIntosh ensures each student has as many successful school days as possible. And with the help of family engagement specialist Deborah Pope Johnson, a group of students were properly rewarded with a free field trip to Udo's Pizzeria and Grill in Newport News. Each student designed and handmade their own personal pizza right at the table. Udo's staff took the creations back to the kitchen and returned with oven-baked pies for the proud students to enjoy their own master pizzas. Udo's manager, Melissa Brown, was thrilled to provide a location for this incentive, and business partner First Advantage Credit Union was happy to fund the outing. And even parents will benefit from getting their kids to McIntosh on time, with the school planning to send home gift cards to further encourage school attendance and positive
Welcome back. Okay, very good. Welcome back, and I hope you enjoyed the school board spotlight. Before we get started, I'm going to recognize one more individual, our former student representative to the board, Ms. Morgan Ryan. I know she's here. She's now a student at University of Virginia. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll give you one minute. Do you want to say something very quick?
Oh my goodness. Ask me that.
Good evening. I just wanted to say, definitely Newport News Public Schools has provided me with a great foundation. I was doubting my personal skills going into the first year at the University of Virginia, but I don't know why I was, because I was definitely prepared. So first year went very well, and I just came back from a semester abroad in Italy. So that was very, very exciting, and I would encourage students who have the opportunity once they get to that level to do a semester abroad or do anything that they can abroad, because it's definitely a learning experiences, a learning experience in many different ways. Some ways you recognize, some ways you don't recognize until later, but that's one thing I would definitely, definitely encourage. But I just wanted to say, Dr. Kilgore, thank you so much for everything that you have done. It feels like I was just sitting in that seat, right next alongside all of you. And it was a great experience to have, definitely a great learning experience, and I've learned a lot from you. And I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done.
Proud of you. Very proud.
College, career, and citizen-ready.
I know it.
In the broad as well.
And traveling.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. So we're gonna move on with our agenda, and at this time, we had item number two. During our meetings, we provide time for the public to address the board. These are scheduled at the earlier part of the agenda and then again toward the end of the meeting. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns or get back with you at a later time. I have a number of cards here today, so when your names come up, please comply with our three-minute limit. As you see to your, be to your left up there, when the green light comes on, your time starts. The yellow light indicates that you have about 30 seconds left, and when the red light comes on, please be mindful and conclude in your comments. If that's been said, when your name comes forward, please come up. And at first, we have this Jim Patterson. Is that correct?
If I may have 15 seconds before I start, just to add my congratulations to Dr. Kilgore and echo everything everybody said. I believe I was with the board when you migrated over from your home in Hampton to Newport News. And she's been a selfless, selfless representative of service and service to children for all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Patterson. Tonight, on behalf of my neighbors on and around Scott Road, I'm asking you for some relief from the recent Warwick Little League behaviors permitted by Newport News Public Schools at the Haydenwood Elementary School Fields. We fully support and appreciate the huge efforts of the many volunteers who make youth league baseball possible. None of our recommendations should negatively impact the quality of the current baseball program offered to kids. At the direction of the Newport News Public Schools in the mid-1990s, the two gates and the fence line that formed the border between Haydenwood Elementary School Field and the Scott Road Residential Street were locked, both for security and safety. Signs were posted advising athletic field users to enter via the school parking lots and not Parkland neighborhood streets, to the school board, which, under a formal MOU, allowed Parks and Rec to use fields on a non-interference basis with the school's programs. This was a three-pronged policy issue: safety, security, and respect for and minimizing traffic impacts on existing neighborhoods. Because of these three issues, any alterations to fields by Parks and Rec or its tenants were to be approved by the public's Newport News Public Schools, with major alterations coming to the school board itself for two readings in action. Each baseball season for some two decades, the Warwick Little League field's primary user would remind its participants that they were to park in the school parking lots, not on neighborhood streets. At some point, those regular reminders stopped, and a few parents began parking on the street, ignoring the posted signage, and with their children climbed the fence around the locked gate. Two years ago, at the start of the Little League season, the lock was cut off the gate adjacent to one of the fields. It was replaced twice or three times by Parks and Rec, only to be cut off when It was replaced twice or three times by Parks and Rec, only to be cut off within a few days each time, apparently by league people. With the gate open, but signage still in place, virtually all parents began parking on the street, with anywhere from fifteen to thirty cars parked along the street at any given game. Over these two years, new signage has been added by Parks and Rec. Additional red and white signs, addressed specifically to league participants and spectators, that's your figure three, were added this past fall, all to no effect. These recent behaviors by the league, allowed by Parks and Rec, and ultimately Newport News Public Schools, the owners of the property, create a dangerous street environment for the league children and citizens in the neighboring area, as well as a security issue for Haydenwood School students as explained below. Multiple interactions with Newport News staff culminating with a meeting of representatives from the schools, Parks and Rec, the league, and neighborhood representatives have brought no relief. I have come to the board tonight, as it appears that all attempts at relief at administrative levels have been unsuccessful, and you are a court of last resort. Specifics including recommended actions to provide a remedy with no penalty to the ability of the league to provide high-quality youth league baseball, a youth league baseball program, follow. I hope that you will read these two pages and direct staff to provide appropriate control over the use of your property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have up a Dr. Margaret Smith.
To our scintillating school board, and again, congratulations, Dr. Kilgore, on your long tenure. I, Dr. Margaret Bernice Smith-Bristow, salutatorium of Class sixty-eight, beg you, implore you to not let Huntington Middle School go the way of a dinosaur, the way of the typewriter, the way of the icebox. I know, you know, we know, that new developments are planned, a new housing area near Huntington, a career workforce development sponsored by the shipyard. Our community needs Huntington Middle School, which as historian and former home economics teacher Hattie Lucas reminds us, was always, always a symbol of community, unity, and hope. As school board members, please see that it remains that way in the community, in our community. Remember, it is a school that produced Hazel Leary, Hazel O'Leary, former Energy Secretary. It is the school that produced Walter Ridley, first black graduate of UVA. And it is the school that produced the late Addison Gale, the father of black aesthetic theory. So, I beg you, I beg you, to spend the nineteen million on repairing it. You are not just repairing a school, you are repairing a city, a village, the educational soul of a people.
Thank you very much. Next, we have up this Terry Best.
Good evening, and I too wish you the best, Dr. Kilgore, in your retirement. My name is Terry Elbest. As a child growing up in the southeast community, I longed for the day when I could attend the home of the mighty Vikings, Huntington High School. As a result of mandated crosstown busing, I was unable to attend the late great Huntington High School. It was changed to an intermediate school, which I did attend in grades eight and nine. I was a child at the time and had no voice in the decisions being made. Other schools in my community that I recall closing are my former elementary school, Walter Reed, James Lee, and Thomas Jefferson. Nationally, we have seen the effects of school closings, and it's clear that the victims of austerity are always the poor and people of color. The reason I'm sharing this information with you is because I think we can't move forward without looking at how the past impacted the present. In my heart at that time, I believe that many choices that were made, especially in the fight for access to equal education, were made with the best intentions. As with Huntington Middle School's closing, the main focus seems to be deterioration and blight, instead of finding existing strengths and building on what people value and what works well. We don't want the future of Huntington to be a one-way exchange and a lack of concern regarding how the loss of a school such as Huntington and its voice affects a community. I believe the ideal replacement for this to can building may be new construction that encompasses a school, a workforce development center, technology, community recreation, and I believe this would be the ideal replacement. It will meet the current and future needs of the community, preserve the historical pride, but most importantly, it will give the southeast community residents, students, and alumni a place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brenda Payne.
Good evening, Dr. Kilgore, and greetings, Chairman and members of the board. I am here to discuss one of the varsity coaches at Woodside High School. Now, I am here on behalf of my daughter, who could not make it because she had work this evening, so I am going to read an email that I sent to Dr. Hockman.
Excuse me. We should refrain from talking about personnel matters in public meetings. And so, we will, I mean, I have your card, and we assure you that the administrator will contact you.
Mr. Nichols can talk to you right now, too.
He's our, he'll be our acting superintendent.
Okay, I know. All due respect, I have went through the proper channels, and I have sent out emails to you, Dr. Kilgore, and also the board, and I have not gotten the response that I think should be appropriate. That's why I was here, because I am a parent, and I'm also working in the school system. So, I was wondering if I could just talk to you guys about it. If not, I will leave this with Mr. Nichols, and leave it at that.
Sure, we will, we will get back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Next, we have up this Perry Johnson.
Good morning, board. I'm a parent dealing with bullying in the high school level. I am afraid for my daughter's safety. My daughter was recently transferred to, I don't want to mention the school, but she was recently transferred. The particular bullying was a gang member, and my daughter was taken out of that school and escorted by Newport News Police Department to the residence on this particular day. Bullying is, bullying is, is, in the high schools right now, it's just, it's really bad. The reason that I am here is to have a voice for my daughter. I tried every avenue to get this addressed. Me being a parent, if there's some way possible that the board can look at having a bullying hotline for the parents, so the parents can call up to the school to try to find out what's going on, because I'm at work every day, and I'm worrying about my daughter. She made it home safely. This particular boy was removed from the schools, which is a good thing, but my problem is that since my daughter was removed from that school on an administrative transfer, transportation is not available. There's not a bus stop for my daughter to catch the bus. Unfortunately, they want my daughter to go 0.2 miles from our residence to catch a bus to the new school. She's a girl. She's fifteen years old. It's in the morning. It's a safety factor, you know. I would, I would love, I would love one of you board members to come with me to my house. I live near Brownfield, to walk at six o'clock in the morning, just walk at six o'clock in the morning, and you tell me how you feel walking, a girl, fifteen years old, walking to a bus stop, that they would not create a stop a few houses from the residence. This is 2017, you know, and I just think that needs to be addressed. You know, it's, I know you guys got a lot on your plate, but these kids are more important than anything.
Mr. Johnson, we take that very seriously, and I assure you that someone will contact you.
Ms. Tilling, maybe you can.
Right down.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, family. It's good to see you, Dr. Kilgore. I'm gonna miss you. You're amazing. Good evening, Chairman and the rest of you fine board members. I'm actually here today on behalf of the NAACP. Normally, I'm here on behalf of my organization, Brothers on the Block, but I serve on the Executive Committee of the NAACP Newport News Chapter with regards to the Huntington Middle School situation that has already been eloquently spoken of passionately by individuals who have staked it at a higher level than I ever could, because I'm not from here. But I do have a three-year existing relationship with my mentoring organization and Huntington Middle School. So, on behalf of the NAACP, we just want to encourage the school board to undertake this massive assignment and decision-making that you guys have with regards to what to do, and that we don't forget the body of people that Huntington has meant so much to, that are often forgotten. And I know that the heart of the school board is to do the things that benefit the community that we elected you guys to do. And so, I'm excited about the opportunity for this new chapter for Huntington, and I've been assured that the richness, the heritage will not be forgotten, whatever is decided. And so, on behalf of the NAACP Newport News Chapter, I just want to pledge our assistance, involvement, and awareness of whatever we can do to make this thing come to, I guess you'd say, a conclusion that will make as many people happy as possible. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Kendall Williams.
Hi, I just want to start by saying congratulations on your retirement. So, my name is Kendall Williams, and I'm a senior from Tab High School, and I live in Newport News. I'm here today as a member of Y Street. You may remember me from my presentation last year. Y Street is the award-winning youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth that focuses on promoting healthy living in Virginia. I'm here to talk about how Y Street's 24/7 campaign is helping Virginia schools to be tobacco and e-cigarette-free 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The 24/7 campaign helps Virginia school divisions adopt, implement, and enforce 100% comprehensive tobacco and e-cigarette-free school policies. Under 100% comprehensive policy, tobacco and e-cigarette use, possession, and distribution is prohibited by anyone, anywhere, at any time. The Newport News City School Division is doing a great job committing to the health of students, staff, and visitors, and your folders are copies of your current tobacco-free policies to use as a reference. Currently, your policy language reflects what is required by the state, but we would like to partner with you to strengthen your policy to close any loopholes and help you become 100% comprehensive. First, we recommend updating the definition of property. The current policy specifies many places where tobacco is prohibited, but there are potential gray areas it may not cover. We recommend that updated policies include all school premises, inside and outside, whether owned, leased, rented, or chartered by the division. Include any school-sponsored or school-related events, whether on or off-site. Second policy, ADB, states that no person may use, possess, sell, or distribute drugs or drug paraphernalia on school grounds. We suggest adding tobacco products to this statement and using the same language without division tobacco policies, throughout division tobacco policies, to ensure consistency in communication and enforcement. Third, define tobacco product and tobacco use to include electronic smoking devices and products containing nicotine. By including these terms directly in your definition and in all policy documents, it is clear that the entire policy applies to alternative products. Fourth, include consequences for staff and student-staff and visitors. The current policy, ADC-P, includes strong language about consequences, and we recommend using similar language across all tobacco-free policies. Fifth, simplify requirements for tobacco-free signs. We recommend a more general requirement so signs can feature alternative products. Finally, expand policy language to provide referrals to sensation resources for students, such as numbers for quit, hotlines, and web resources. The 24/7 campaign and tobacco/e-cigarette-free schools toolkit details these resources and makes it easy to offer them as necessary. As a partner resource to the Newport News City School Division, we are here to offer your help to update your tobacco policies, so it includes all tobacco-free language. Once you decide to adopt a comprehensive policy, the 24/7 campaign has great ways to support implementing and enforcing this policy. First, we will provide free tobacco-free signage to all schools in your school division. Second, our free tobacco and e-cigarette-free schools toolkit will be sent to all schools in your division. Third, we will add you to our official map of 100% comprehensive divisions. And finally, in your folder, you'll find examples of how we can help your school division earn positive publicity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Naisha Thompson. Is it Naisha?
Not Asia.
Not Asia.
Okay, well, good afternoon, everybody. So, I too want to talk about the bus situation, because I go to Denby High School, but I'm a resident of the southeast community. I live on Eighteenth Street. I have to walk to Twenty-seventh Street to catch my bus. I have been harassed by gentlemen three times this school year alone. So, when I called, I got, I called myself, and I got my mom to call to try to see about getting a closer bus stop, and they act like they can't do anything, because I'm not in the aviation program, so they won't make me a bus stop. So, I just want that somebody to do something about that, because I feel like that's not fair. I'm going to school, I'm doing what I'm supposed to do, I'm making the grades that I'm supposed to make, and I'm not a bad child at that, and me being harassed by men is a problem. So, I just do not like it.
Is it Pakura Shabash, is that correct?
Shabash.
Shabash.
Malcolm X.
Welcome.
Dr. Kilgore, I met you when I was eleven years old at Lindsay Middle School. Oh, my goodness, I'm about eighteen now.
And I'm twenty-five.
Congratulations, and best of wishes to you with your retirement. My issue here is bullying. As a community advocate, and hearing the stories about our children and the various schools that Newport News have and the bullying issues, it is a grave concern of mine to protect our children. However, there is an instance of bullying that we don't really talk about too much, and that's administrative bullying. A lot of times, we mostly condense bullying to adolescents, and that is not so. My son was a victim of adolescent bullying in his school. Luckily enough, he was strong enough to be able to, you know, handle that situation, thanks to his mom, but, you know, for those that aren't, I'm really concerned about it. And Newport News Public Schools does not have a transparency policy when complaints are filed on administrative, it doesn't have one when it's filed on children either, but that's because of minors. But when we have a complaint on staff, I think that we should have a policy that allows for transparency between the parent and the school administration. I have no idea what happened to the gentleman who caused my son to be pulled out of class, assaulted, and searched. I know he's still a principal in Newport News Public Schools, which really concerns me, because if he would go that far, he bullied my son the whole school year, but if he would go that far, what other child would become a target? And being that I don't know what safety measures were put in place, I'm just really concerned about that. There needs to be a transparency policy. Now, that's over, and now I want to talk about Huntington. I didn't get to go to Huntington, but my mom did, and my uncles did, and my aunts did, and Huntington is a pillar of community support and just identity. And if we continue... And if we continue to take away those things from our community, we won't have a community much longer that we can call our own. And, you know, when you talk about health and well-being, having something to be able to identify with is what's necessary to continue to be whole. You know, I went to McGruder. I am still devastated, and I'm happy for the STEM Academy and it, but I am devastated. I was like, why can't we call McGruder STEM Academy? Take the school! I went to McGruder, my children went to McGruder, my mother went to McGruder, and it's gone. We walked down there, and it's gone, and it tears my heart out. Please, please, save the identity of Newport News to the people that that school belonged to. Don't take that away from them like you all did at McGruder. And I thank you for your time. And Ms. Shelley, you go, girl!
All right, thank you. Uganda Jones.
So I'm Uganda Sample Jones. Thank you for speaking with me and Dr. Kilgore. I know you said second grade, and I love you dearly. Thank you so much, and I appreciate everything you do, and best of wishes. So I would like to speak with you briefly about Huntington and how important it is to make the repairs and return our students back to the neighborhood. So I moved here about eleven years ago, and shortly after I moved to the southeast community, I met Dr. Margaret Bristol. She quickly let me know that she is alumni association member, and she educated me on the history of Huntington and how it's been a staple in our community since the sixties. We continue to talk about the East End and some of its challenges. One of the biggest challenges that she felt like we had in the schools was parent involvement. Since then, I've learned that the southeast district only has three middle schools that our children are zoned for or allowed to go because of strict magnet and STEM regulations. Neighborhood schools are important. They grow a community, they give our children a sense of village. They help to eliminate transportation hurdles for parents, the children's inability to participate fully in after-school programs, and of course, parent involvement. Most importantly, keeping Huntington a middle school gives our children a sense of community and support in their neighborhood. So I would like to see the school get the necessary repairs and return the students back to the school where they can learn in a safe environment, and then open Huntington for dual use in the evening, offering the community GD classes, job training, resume writing, and language classes. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have five, so we're going to continue, we want to continue.
Joan Moore.
Dr. Kilgore, I'm starting talking to you now. I don't live here, I live in Hampton, but I'm a nineteen-sixty-six graduate of Huntington High School. Honorary member of the class nineteen-sixty-two because my sister graduated in that class, and I went to every party that any of them ever, that that class had. So I came out of two classes. I'm here, two things, maybe three. One is nostalgia of Huntington. And that can only carry you so far. I'm more concerned about the planning for Huntington. You're talking about these housing initiatives in the southeast community. Who's going to be coming into those housing starts? Usually, families with mothers and fathers of, well, mothers of childbearing age. Where would they go to school? I also speak from a professional standpoint of having worked with Newport News Child Protective Services and being called out to a neighborhood in the area of Dunbar, only to have the child that I'm there about going to school up here in Haydenwood. How does a parent get to a child who is sick that far away from home? I also speak again from a planning standpoint of looking at utilizing that school as a multipurpose facility, education foremost, but there are other needs in the community that that school and that building itself could be utilized for. Recreation, services to the elderly in the community, senior services, workforce development, job training, some multitudes of needs in that community that that building could utilize. I understand that there's been a dramatic reduction in the number of students that attend there, but that building could still be used, that additional space could be used to address those other needs within the community. So I would ask the board to consider that and to talk to the city council about the appropriations that will make that utilization of that facility possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Janie Hayesmore.
Well, you all heard me before, so maybe I'll just try to give my time to the others that are going to speak. But I just want to say tonight, if we move our students, I want our students moved as a group like we did for Achievable Dream, just take our whole school and plant it into another building, and let them operate there until we do what we're going to do. And we have to consider the children. Let's not, you know, upset them academically and that type thing. I think if they're going to go through different changes, if we send them out to the schools as individuals. The other thing is that that edifice is a very strong presence in our community. We want to keep that presence. We don't want all of our landmarks going the way of the dinosaur in the icebox. So I know that Mr. Stodgel said when he was chairman that these repairs and everything was going to catch up with us. He cited that to the city council. It has happened, and we just need to, right now, do what we can about it. Let me know if we need to do some fundraising, because you know I'm good at that, too. But anyway, I just want to take the point of personal privilege and say, Dr. Kilgore, you know I love you. We sat side by side at many meetings. You've always been a strong advocate for our PTA. We thank you for that. And I'm going to miss you very, very much, and I hope you will get plenty of relaxation and just have fun for yourself. And to this silence, congratulations.
Next, Rodney Hunter.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Chairman and Superintendent and to the board. I want to say it's a pleasure to come to speak on behalf of the greatest high school in the Commonwealth, Huntington High School. And let me just ask if all of the Huntington Vikings would stand to give you an idea of the power of this school. A city, a city, a city, the city has a spirit. Our community has had a spirit, and the spirit is instilled within the people to give them pride. Huntington was such a good school because we had such a great love for the school. And when we traveled and played other schools, everybody knew it was something special about Huntington. I love this city of Newport News, Virginia, everywhere I go, and I love Huntington High School because Huntington helped me to be the person that I am, and I'll never forget that, and I'm so thankful. I wasn't a salutatorian like Dr. Margaret, but you didn't have to be the salutatorian as long as you were there, and the teachers had such a love for us. They were second parents to us. And it's important for us, I think, to keep that school in that community because that community is a community that was so thriving and so important to this city and to us as a people. When you think about it, now, that was during a time of segregation, but do you think that we felt like we didn't have everything we needed? Do you think it made us feel like we were inferior, no matter what the law said? That was the power of that school to make us to know that we were special. And a day would come like this, when there would be black representation that could not sit here when we were growing up, but you're here now, and that's what those educators trained us to be prepared for this day. And that's why we are speaking to ask you, do not let the school close. Now, if you say, well, it's a financial issue, let me say, we got inferior resources our whole time. We didn't even have a gymnasium. We had to use the shipyard community center. They built Newport News a gym, they already had a gym, and they built them another gym before they built us a gym in nineteen sixty-five. So the resources, we've never got. So you owe us, give us a little something. The community, when you think about communities, my light on, okay. The community, when you think about it, it encourages, it inspires, it motivates mentors. When we look at our youth now, what do they have, what can inspire them? They have no model. When we were growing up, going to the foot, we could see Earl Faison, Benny McRae, all of the people that we wanted to be like. We need mentors. That school would provide that. So I want to say thank you so much for letting me come and share.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Yolanda Spinks.
This is going to be short, sweet, and simple. I just moved here not too long ago, I think maybe three, four months now. I met you, Ms. Dr. Kilgore, congratulations. We met in the.
I remember that.
Remember? Okay, cool. All right. Anyway, the only reason I'm here, I'm a social worker, I deal with mental health, I'm a life coach, I'm an advocate. I've been around Texas, Louisiana, all that. I did research on Huntington. I'm going to show you an experience. Went in Louisiana, they had, we had one community, I graduated with twelve people in my classroom. My senior class was twelve people. But we advocated and we preserved that school because they wanted to close it because it was a financial issue. So the little community that I was in, we got together, we raised funds, and we did what we had to do to save that community. And we went to the school board, just like they're doing. So I'm asking you, I don't have anything to do with Huntington, but because I'm here, I'm a part of Newport News now. My kids go to Heritage, so I'm a part of that. So I'm asking you, along with them, to not do that, please. Okay? Next, this bullying issue, we need to do something, for real, seriously. I volunteer on a lot of things, a lot, all over the place, I volunteer. Bullying is an issue. You have kids that's killing themselves because they're scared to go to school. This is real. This is real. I deal with suicide, I deal with depression, I deal with schizophrenia. I deal with it on a daily basis, and it's bad. My suggestion is, can somebody write a grant to get some mental health workers in there? The teachers can't do it. The teachers need to concentrate on academics. They can't concentrate on a child throwing a desk across the room because then that disrupts the whole classroom. Grants need to be written for mental health workers who are trained to deal with those issues that the kids are dealing with in school so the school can operate as a school and as a functioning body that can go to college. Not saying you can't, not saying it's not, but if the issues were dealt with, with the other, with the children that have issues, then it wouldn't disrupt the other kids that are in there trying to learn because that child maybe came from a dysfunctional family. What does that mean? I'm off. What does that mean?
Twenty-five seconds.
Oh, well, let me hurry up. But I'm serious, grant money is out there to be written if the mental health, if people would recognize that we need mental health workers in there to concentrate on those issues because the goddess councils can't do it. They're not trained. I go to school extra to be trained in that field because this is what I do, been doing it for twenty-five years. So that's all my spiel, and I'll talk to y'all later. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're down to our last two cards, so we have Deborah Wilkes.
Good evening, I'm Deborah Wilkes. I'd like to reiterate all of the good feelings that comes from those who attended Huntington Intermediate. I was Huntington Intermediate School graduate. And looking at the fact sheet prepared, it is really good, you guys. I mean, it's got facts, it's got data, it's got what needs to be done, it's got a resolution on the back, and I said, what is it missing? It's missing the heart, the heart of these people here who came out to say, we love this school, we need this school to continue. Put the heart in there because hearts are facts, too. The fact is, you're going to break our hearts if y'all let this school go. So please, when you're making this decision, whatever you've got to do, Ms. Simons had that one vote, please put that one vote towards Huntington, baby, and save that school for all of us that went there, that love it, that love this community, that were made stronger and better because of it. We need to keep Huntington. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Huntley, is that correct? Kenneth?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening because I am a representative of the community activist for children in our community. I'm a past physical director of Hampton Roads Boys and Girls Club. But I am a member also of the last class to enter Huntington High School, which was a pre-freshman eighth grader. And then I graduated from Ferguson High School in nineteen seventy-five. I'm here tonight to speak about Huntington High School, and I hope that I can bring some kind of solution to you all to help with this problem. Callis P. Huntington was a vital person in our community who helped build Huntington High School, and Huntington High School is named after Callis P. Huntington. I would ask you all to employ with Newport News Shipyard Huntington Ingles because when I was there at Huntington High School, shop classes were something. We had welding, woodworking, all kinds of shop classes, electrical, electricians' class. And I think if we partner with Newport News Shipbuilding, that there's something that they can do to help us to maintain this school, to bring a magnet high school technology academy to Huntington High School or to Huntington Middle School, which it is now. Also, let's partner, reach out to Hampton University to bring internships in to help with their education. Not only them, we could, we could employ, or reach out to Riverside Hospital where we can start children in CPA classes. I really would not like to see Huntington High School disappear from our community. And I would like you to please excuse my attire because at Huntington High School, they taught us how to be gentlemen. When you come into the house, you're supposed to take your hat off, but when I came up here, I wanted to wear my Huntington High School cap because I associate with so many things that the Huntington alumni do out in our community, which is outstanding organization. So if we please, let's not forget the history. Addison Gale, who was an editor- Addison Gale, who was an editor author, Callous P. Huntington, Hazel Reed, Judge Pute, Mr. Howard Gwynn, all of these distinguished people in our community, some that have gone on but have left lots of history and memories there at Huntington High School. So, I beg you, ma'am and sir, please do not take Huntington High School from the southeast community. Please do not take Huntington High School from the southeast community. And I stand here with the rest of my Huntington Vikings, if you will stand, all of you all. We beg you, please do not take Huntington Middle School from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I would, on behalf of the, on the behalf of the board, I would just thank each one of you for being patient and obeying the time, and we have listened to your comments. We will consider those as we move on with the Huntington. It's just great to have you folks out here from Huntington and those who went and those who've had memories and things of that sort. So, I am glad, as the chair of the school board, I am ecstatic that we are having this conversation. I wish I would've started back with Mr. Stodger, or maybe when Mr. Ashby was also chair. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, just, I know you took comments after that, but I do share what Mr. Stodger said, and we listen, we listen to. Thank you very much for coming. All the interventions and suggestions that were shared, we are extremely receptive to it. But we also want to say and share with you, beginning in 2010, Newport News Public Schools, the superintendent, senior staff, school board, went ahead and began to seek funds from city council for seven consecutive years. Huntington has been on our map, so we have been extremely proactive in reference to that. So, again, the suggestions and which have been shared with us, oh, we receive them tremendously. But we also want to share with you and express with you, we value Huntington, we value the community. I live about five blocks from Huntington. I understand the enthusiasm, the recognition, all the achievements and accomplishments that have been, that have been made from people that graduated from Huntington. But we also want the record to show that this school board, this superintendent, this senior staff, has been very proactive in Huntington. After Discovery STEM Academy was built, we went ahead right away and said, we need to look at Huntington because of what began to happen. We know clearly, concretely, definitely, the setting of the school has a whole lot to do with learning. It has a whole lot to do with learning. So, again, we received the information. The school board will work with the acting superintendent. We've listened to your comments, but we know that we want to do what's best for children. And again, we are so receptive to you coming up and what you have shared in reference to that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Well, we're gonna move the agenda to the next, item number three, the consent agenda. There, we have your package. Item 3.01, your minutes from the special meeting and work session, November 3, 2017, 3.03. The minutes from the special meeting, November 14, 3.03. Minutes from the regular session, November 14, 3.03. Minutes from the special meeting, December 5. And of course, 3.05, your financial revenue expense, along with your child nutrition services. We also have a personnel report there at 3.04. Do we have to approve that?
We have acceptance of the consent agenda.
You heard the motion.
Second.
You heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Simpson, please call the row.
Mr. Stodger.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
And Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Let's move on to our action items. Item 4.01, personnel actions.
You don't have any.
Oh, good. We don't have any of that. We'll move on to item 4.02, the resolution for Huntington Middle School site and bits. Do we have, so we've just, some more history, as Mr. Colton just said, since 2010, the renovations replacement for Huntington Middle Schools have been included in the CIP request approved from this, from this school board. The funds for the project have never been appropriate in the city council's approved capital improvement plan. More recently, the facilities condition assessment of all Newport News buildings indicated significant improvements that were needed immediately at Huntington Middle School. To just give you an example, the HVAC is estimated to cost us $11.6 million just for the HVAC. There's the third floor that's unusable. There's mold in that particular building. So, we hear you, but again, there's about another six, six or 7.6 million dollars worth of just upkeep to bring the school into an environment that we really want our kids in. I have two daughters who came through the Newport News school system, and I hear Huntington. But we also, it's our responsibility to ensure that that place is also safe, that is also safe. More than anything, that place is safe and it's an environment for learning. And in, under its current condition, it's really not. It's not. And so, we hear you, but it takes money in order to get things done. And that school board here, we can't create money. So, we have to rely on the state, the Fed, and the citizens in the city. So, that being said, we have a resolution, and basically this resolution will give the superintendent, will give the superintendent an opportunity to go out and seek in two phases. You know, one, February the 20th, 2018, there and go back and look at the condition of the school. One's to see if it's fit to have our students even come back for the 2018, 2019 year. And then, two, we'll have a final decision back in March of 2019 with a final report of what really is going to do at the school. So, we have some time right now. And so, right now, all we're doing tonight is approving a resolution that authorizes the superintendent or the acting superintendent to move forward, take all your comments, and move forward and see what's best for that building and for our students. So, do we have a motion for the, approve the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we consider a resolution 18 dash.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Simpson, please call the row.
Mr. Stodger.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
And Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Next on the item, we have 2018 Newport News Legislative Program. And do we have a report for that? Nope. Nope. Nope.
It's an action item.
It's an action item?
Yeah. So, the board heard it at the last.
Okay, we heard it at the last. Mr. Finneran gave us a report at our last school board meeting. We just need to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of the legislative board program.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Second, you heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Simpson, please call the row.
Mr. Stodger.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. And then, we're, our next, we have the new course recommendation for 2018, 2019. I believe we've also heard that from Ms. Kathy.
Ms. Swett.
Ms. Swett?
Nancy Swett.
Ms. Kathy Swett? Yes, we heard it from there. Do we have a motion for approval?
Second. Some moves.
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, please call the row.
Mr. Stodger.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
And Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. And last item we have for action is the lease amendment for the Aviation Academy.
It's to extend the lease.
Actually, we're gonna extend the lease. If everyone knows at the airport, they did get a brand-new airport executive director. We've extended, the lease was to end in December 2017, oh, first of 2016. We moved it to 20, December 2017, and we're going to make it so it's on a fiscal year with the school system. So, this one will end June 20, 2018, same date as the school fiscal year. So, we have a move, or can I get a motion for approval?
I move approval. It's essentially a six-month extension.
That is correct. That is correct.
Second.
You heard the motion and second. Time for the question. There being none, please call the row.
Mr. Stodger.
Four.
Mr. Ashby.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, we move, we'll move on to item number five, reports and information, WHRO Educational Service Report. Mr. Brian Callahan?
Mm-mm.
Birch. Birch. Hello, how are you doing, Mr. Schmidt?
How are you? I'm Chair Hunter, Dr. Kilgore, members of the board.
I'm doing well. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. I come to you tonight to give you a report I give every couple of years about the relationship you have with WHRO. As you may know, maybe the new ones know that you actually are one of the schools that own WHRO, the 19 school divisions in the region own, and we provide all sorts of services to you. And I've given you, and you should have hard copies or electronic copies of this report. I'm gonna go through very briefly. And first off, on page one is your leadership. And I'm, it was great leadership, of course. I'll be remiss. Dr. Kilgore, Ashby, it's been wonderful working with you for 10 years. You're gonna be sorely missed, just not from, just, of course, the region's standpoint, we'll miss you. Ashby's been involved in every strategic discussion around education that we've had. But I personally, friendship I've valued for so many years, and I'm hoping when you're bored sleeping in, I can keep you busy a little down the road. So, we'll be in touch about that. So, going into the report, very briefly, page two of the report, eMedia VA is a digital repository we provide to every single educator in the Commonwealth, public, private, and home school. 170,000 educators get this free service. We provide digital learning objects for your teachers to use in the classroom, and it could be a video, it could be an audio game, app, lesson plans. We have lesson plans. We can, we can have teachers customize learning for the students. So, one student may learn well through videos, one may learn better through text. eMedia VA allows a customized digital repository of services, all correlated to the Virginia standards of learning. We partner with national organizations, like Smithsonian, National Archives, Library of Congress, but probably more importantly, we partner with all sorts of Virginia organizations, taking their best digital content that's valuable in the classroom and make it easily searchable for all of your teachers to be used. And you take great advantage. We actually have a single sign-on connection with your teachers when they log into your, your school division, they're automatically into eMedia VA. We also had four trainings this past year as part of your Innovate Technology Conference, so we have about 50 of your teachers that took advantage of the training. So, again, this has really taken off quite well within, in the division. Lots of your folks also take advantage of the professional development we offer. And items two, three, and four on the page show our special topic forums, our online professional development, where you can get graduate credit or recertification, or professional development, things like code-to-learn sessions or digital systems modules sessions. Lots of ways where we provide teachers a great professional development at, you know, at pretty much no cost. Item five on page three is our workforce development efforts called Skills Online. We offer 4,000 courses in 18 different industry sectors. We also have a GED prep course online, lots of opportunities for students that might not otherwise be going to college or going down the CTE path. We have all sorts of courses available for students. Page four of our student services, of course, we have made a bunch of high school courses for you. 25 high school courses that we have made and we give to you. You take them and you use them however you want. So, we have made for you and given to you Algebra I, Algebra II, or TRIG, Astronomy, Biology, Chemistry, Earth Science, Economics, and Personal Finance, English 9, 10, 11, and 12, French, Geometry, Health and PE 9 and 10, Math Analysis, Oceanography, Physics, Psychology, Virginia US History, Virginia US Government, World Geography, and World History 1 and 2. You guys use a lot of these schools, courses. Again, we give them to you, and you can modify them to meet the needs of your students here in the division. You own them, we just are the manufacturer, and you get those as being an owner of WHRO. Schools that are not owners buy these courses, about $10,000 per course. You just have your annual dues, and you get those for free. We also created, and actually, Ashby and I served on the statewide board, Virtual Learning Advisory Committee, where comments were made about, wouldn't it be nice just to have the class that the teacher teaches online? So, if the kid's out through snow or suspension, they could just watch the class. So, we've done that for Algebra and Geometry, literally every class from day one to the last day of school, master teacher online. So, if the student, for whatever reason, misses that class, they can be pointed to that, that lesson that day, and they can watch the lesson. Also, parents can use it, or maybe even a teacher who may not be up, fully up to speed that you've had to fill in there. Again, all in eMedia VA, all free, and we're about to start production on Earth Science. We went to the superintendent's, I'll tell you, Algebra and Geometry, the Department of Education wanted. We came to the superintendent's and said, what's next? And they said, Earth Science. So, that's our next course that goes into production very soon. We also operate Virtual Virginia. This is the state's Advanced Placement World Language Program. 50 of your students took advantage of Virtual Virginia this past year, and actually, one of your students actually took advantage of the full-time program that's now in place. This is, we're now in the third year of, I would still call it beta programs, 200 students are allowed. One of your students took advantage of this in a full-time way. What's nice is, when a, when a homeschooler goes to this program, you actually get the ADM. And you know there's been a lot of legislation that would reverse that trend where a student who goes online with a commercial vendor, you lose the ADM. The model we work with, the ADM comes to you. So, we think there's a great advantage in taking, in doing Virtual Virginia that way. Page five, we'd like to celebrate smart kids. And so, items two, our PBS Kids Writers Contest, kids K through 5, they write a story, they illustrate the story, they submit it for judging. You had nine entries from, you can see the schools listed here, and the winners, we actually take those stories and we animate them. We make them a TV. These young children whose stories now come to life through, through the power of television, and it's just a wonderful experience for the kids. We hope you'll continue to have these children enter into the PBS Kids Writers Contest. Spelling Bee, we are in, coming into our 11th year, the regional spelling bee. Last year, you had eight students in the bee. Hopefully, this year, we'll get a win, right? So, we'll hope for that. The bee is in February, and hopefully, your schools will again do well. The Great Computer Challenge, been doing this for over 31 years, K through 12, students compete in computer applications and software competitions. Most of your students have competed at the junior level, the elementary school level. We do have a senior level for the older children. So, if kids in that area would like to participate, we'd love to see folks at the higher grade levels participate. Item number six on page six, we do a lot of videos, but one I want to highlight is our Education Now segments, where we take the best practices of school divisions around the region, and we highlight them. And of course, Dr. Kilgore's been on the air a lot over the years. Right now, she's highlighting the Career Pathways Initiative, and so, if you are a viewer of WHRO, I'm sure you've seen your superintendent on the air quite regularly. I'm gonna jump real to page eight, just family, early learners. I'm not gonna go through all the detail here. We have things like STEM vans, reading camps, odd squad, B-D agent camps, and coding camps, reading buddies, literacy vans, and library corners, and reading schools. At the end of page 10, you can see all the activities we provided within the division this past year. A lot, of course, was at Carver Elementary, and you can read all the details there. And again, feel free to take advantage because you can use it, the more you use, it doesn't cost you anymore. So, as we make sure that your teachers of early childhood students learn about these activities, we come out and we'll work with your folks, no extra charge. As school board members, page 11 is what you really care about, is your investment in WHRO. Last year was $66,000. For that, you got in return value and savings of $820,000, a $12.45 to one return on your a twelve dollar and forty-five cents to one return on your investment. With that, happy to take any questions.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Again.
Thank you very much.
It's been a pleasure.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay. Next, we have up is our student leadership in Newport News Public Schools.
Good evening. My name is Jeremiah Galding, and I'm a senior at Menchville High School and a future engineer. Present, presenting with me tonight is Julian Dunston, a senior at Heritage High School, and Mariah Jones, who's a junior at Woodside High School. We are here tonight as members of Citywide Student Council Association Executive Board. We're excited to be here today to talk to you about student involvement in Newport News Public Schools. Tonight, we're gonna talk to you about who we are and what is the Citywide Student Council Association, or SCA. We're also gonna share with you information about some of our current projects and what we hope to accomplish in the future. Citywide SCA, now in its second year, is an organization which is open to all Newport News Public School, high school students. The purpose of the organization is to increase student involvement and leadership opportunities to promote a positive culture in our schools and community. The Citywide SCA Executive Board is made up of two, five members from each high school, which includes the SCA President and Vice President, and those appointed by the high school principal. The Executive Board works together to advance common goals and to represent the overall student body. I want to reiterate that any high school student is welcome and strongly encouraged to participate in Citywide SCA. A few of our Executive Board members are here tonight. I would like to ask them to stand. Before September fifteenth, twenty seventeen, most of us had never met. We each were actively involved in our home schools, but never had been given the opportunity to get to know each other. All of that changed when we attended the twenty seventeen Impact Legacy Leadership Retreat at the Jamestown Four-H Educational Center in Williamsburg. Over the course of the weekend, not only did we bond as a team, but we also learned about the strategic goals of the school division and discussed the different cultures in our schools. We also discussed how important it is for we, as a team, to more than just lead. We wanted to make an impact. We outlined common student issues and needs that we had seen demonstrated, as well as brainstormed goals which we thought were the most important for our peers and our After learning about goal setting and reviewing data, we identified three goals for the academic year, each of which we will go over tonight. Our key focus areas for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen year are encouraging a growth mindset among students, promoting the student physical, emotional, and social well-being, as well as three, increasing the student involvement and creating diverse opportunities for all students. Mariah will come now and talk to you about our first goal, promoting growth mindset.
Good evening. My name is Mariah Jones. I'm a junior at Woodside High School and a future neuropsychologist, in case you didn't already know. One of the topics of our leadership training at the Four-H Educational Center was growth mindset, a theory introduced by Carol Dweck, a Stanford University psychology professor, which suggests that intelligence can be increased through hard work, rather than somebody is just born being smart. Growth mindset is also a foundation, foundational principle of one, one of NMPS's core beliefs, that smart is something you become. Students with fixed mindsets, which is the opposite of a growth mindset, believe that their abilities, their intelligence, or their talents have limits, that what they are, who they are, that's just what they are. They have no chance to grow. They have a certain amount of ability, and that's it. Students with a growth mindset believe that through hard work and dedication, they can develop their talents and their abilities more. They have a chance to grow through effort and through good teaching. They also recognize that mistakes and failure are opportunities to grow, rather than setbacks that tell them that they can't do something. We felt that embracing growth mindset principles would really help students to not only see themselves, but be more confident, and also to alleviate student stress. We created a plan to train students and staff, which began with the Superintendent's Advisory Group on Education. At the start of the new year, we will train the principal advisory groups in each high school, as well as student leaders, student organizations, and faculty and staff. Julian will now share with you our next goal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Julian Dunston, and I'm a senior at Heritage High School and a future general surgeon. I'm really excited to be here tonight to introduce you guys to Citywide SCA's Student Wellness Initiative. Let me make sure I'm on the right slide. There we go. We began talking about these issues at the leadership trip that we took that you guys observed earlier. And when we first started, we started discussing how we could help students in creating different, creating different opportunities for them to face their obligations for school, and face their health issues that they observe every single day. We all agree that we should identify ways to encourage good habits and provide tools that help students live healthier lives. Last Monday, we sat down with some local community partners, including some of our NMPS adult wellness staff, to talk about some of the opportunities that we could create to connect students with information and services that would advance their well-being. The response was amazing, and the meeting was standing room only. Going forward, several organizations have pledged support to this initiative, including the ones that you guys see right here on the right side. You know, it's a nice list, you know. The result was a plan to launch a unique student wellness program that resembles the program offered to the NMPS employees, with monthly challenges and community activities that they could all engage in. One benefit is that this program will create a sense of community, as students and faculty will be able to participate in challenges and set goals to live healthier. We also recently learned that the company which maintains the wellness tracking portal that is used by the NMPS employees might be interested in incorporating our program as the first student wellness program for students. We also talked about our desire to establish spaces for students to retreat to, where they just need time to be stressed, because we have observed that students who go through things every day in school, sometimes they just need a place to go, to go and relax. Part of our wellness strategy will also include the establishment of student wellness clubs in each of our schools.
Gotta get the slides. Okay, so, as Citywide Student Council Association, one of our main goals was to increase student involvement. And we actually found out that we've been doing that using projects that Julian and Jeremiah have highlighted earlier. I want to reiterate that Jeremiah stated that our Citywide SCA General Body meetings are open to all high school students and take place the fourth Wednesday of every month at Gildersleeve Middle School at five P.M. Recently, Citywide SCA and Project Inclusion members teamed up to facilitate and kick off the Expect Respect Training for all middle school leaders from across the division. Expect Respect is a student-led program that teaches middle school leaders how to recognize and also how to use strategies when they witness disrespect and bullying in their school communities. Another middle school project that I am very excited to be participating with and planning, on the planning team of, is the Bloom Middle School Girls Empowerment Conference. This is a fabulous conference which will take place February the seventeenth at Christopher Newport University, and will also give middle school girls not only a chance to feel empowered, but a chance to feel as an empowered leader. We are partnering and working with students, organizations that are females in NMPS high schools, as well as Christopher Newport University, Hampton University, and other local organizations. This conference will include breakout sessions on topics that range everywhere from self-worth, healthy relationships, mental health, social media, bullying and global leadership, a panel discussion, a resource fair, and an empowerment rally. Our goal after this conference is to establish Bloom Clubs at every middle school, so that these girls cannot take what they learn at this conference and put it to use in every school. In addition to working on these projects, we will also be recruiting two hundred high school students to work with a family festival that will be hosted and sponsored by the NMPS Family Engagement Specialists in March. And, as Julian mentioned, the new wellness clubs will create yet another opportunity for student involvement.
So what's next? It's important that we gather information from our peers, what, to see what they need to help them succeed. We'll work on how to best gather that information after the holidays and use it to help finalize the plans for the student wellness program that Julian mentioned earlier. We also realize that although it is great to have all these wonderful projects, we have to make sure that it's easy for students to get connected to them. We're also planning to launch a student news program that includes student anchors, reporters, meteorologists, and et cetera. And finally, we want to do, we want to do the groundwork to establish a division-wide peer leader program, which will pair our eleventh and twelfth grade students with ninth and tenth graders, to ease their transition into high school and provide additional social, academic, and emotional support. This concludes our report for this evening. We are really glad to have the opportunity to lead change and innovate in our school division. We thank you for allowing us to speak tonight, and we're allowed, we would now like to answer any questions.
So, first thing, I'm gonna give you the round of applause. That was excellent. That's absolutely phenomenal. Do we have any questions?
Just a.
Or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
How many middle schools have been invited to participate in the Bloom Conference?
I believe all of the middle schools have been invited.
In Virginia?
No, in Newport News. No, this is a Newport News Public Schools event. Yes.
I just wanna say y'all did an amazing job. Very well spoken. Really excited to see all the great things our young people in Newport News are doing, stepping up to, stepping up. You definitely showing great leadership. And I can see you on the news one day. You're, you just did amazing. Y'all keep up the good work, keep staying focused, keep leading this, the youth in the right direction, and job well done.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, and I agree to what, what has been shared already. The young lady in the middle, can you share, what's your, pronounce your first name?
Mariah.
Mariah. I have not seen you. Can you, is your mom sitting here?
Yes, sir.
And wait a minute, you, I've never met you, I've never seen you before, but I know who your mother is. And you wanna say, well, Mr. Ashby, how do you know who my mother is? Cause your mother is that lady bubbling back there that is full with so excitement and enthusiasm. The whole time you were speaking, I'm glad you didn't look at her, cause she was walking on ass. She's like, booty. But congratulations on all three of you. The presentations were excellent. You presented them extremely well, and what's going on as far as student leadership in Newport News Public Schools is phenomenal. I think that the whole thing that the board is totally impressed with is the student leadership, the adults were sitting back there. And you presented exceptionally well, on an outstanding level. So whatever you do, continue. Continue to do a great work. And then lastly, I love what you said about what you're going to do, cause one of the things when I'm talking to young people, middle school or high school, they say, I want to be, I think I'm going to be. But you said, I'm what you are going to be. And that is, that's a growth mindset. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Jared, I just wanna say as well that that was a fantastic presentation. You all have carried yourselves very well. And I wanna thank the superintendent and the administration for bringing forward the presentation we'd often, we talk about as a board, we'd like to hear from the students and hear about the student leadership that students are participating in. And so to hear it firsthand from you all was a real treat tonight, and you all are showing us what student leadership really looks like in our city. So we're all very proud of you. I'm sure that we're all very proud of you, and you guys just did a fantastic job, very professional presentation.
Not your last time, you're a pro, that's a good.
Okay, well, we're gonna move the agenda. Item number five point oh three, we have a membership report. You also have an attendance report, constructive report. Anyone have any comments on those? If not, they are part of your package. And we're gonna deviate a little bit from the actual agenda, I believe, as the chair, I think I can believe, I can do that. So at this time, again, we present ourselves with an opportunity to hear from the audience. Do we have any cards?
I have no cards.
There are no cards. Then we will move on to the matters by the school board. Mrs. Rodriguez, Ramirez, I'm sorry. Mrs. Ramirez, all right.
I would like to start out by saying thank you. As they all said, that was a wonderful presentation, and it was just amazing to see that there's not just, you know, not just one, not just two, but you guys are taking multiple initiatives to make Newport News Public Schools even better. So thank you so much for all that you do. And I would also like to offer my congratulations to, even though they may not be here anymore, all the finance teachers who received recognition tonight. I know from my personal experience that they do a great job. So congratulations to all of them. I'd also like to point out and let you guys know that seeing it as it is the holiday season, and if you've ever been to public school, you know there are a lot of concerts going on right now. It takes a lot of really hard work and dedication, prepare for holiday concerts, which is something that a lot of Newport News Public School students are doing right now. It's something that they're putting a lot of work into, and everything that I've seen has been amazing. So just shout out to all the students who have been working really, really hard, all the musical ensembles who've been working really, really hard to showcase our skills and to learn. My last recognition would have to be to Dr. Kilgore. As many of you know, this is her last meeting. She's been a role model to me ever since sophomore year, and she's just been so dedicated and so hardworking. I just wanna thank you from the bottom, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for everything that you do. I will continue to admire you and look up to you always, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
All right. Well, of course, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. Wanted definitely mention it, because we're in the holiday season, we won't see each other again until the, until the new year. And acknowledging as well, this is Dr. Kilgore's last meeting with us, and we really have appreciated your leadership, Dr. Kilgore, and we're gonna, we're gonna miss you tremendously. As folks were coming up and commenting, I was reflecting on, talked about Riverside Hospital, and it's so great, that is a program that you worked on, that we have Riverside Hospital partnering with Warwick High School at our Health Sciences Academy. Talked about having the shipyard, bringing manufacturing classes, and partnering with our school. We have, we have the shipyard at Heritage High School. So just, you know, hearing all of the things that citizens want to do, that we're already doing, that we're already leaning forward on and getting to work on, really appreciate your leadership and time to be that proactive in that way that I know as a board member, I've come to you with a lot of, out there, and, and very vigorous ideas, and appreciate that you've listened to all of them, and because of that, I think that our school division is where it is today with all the success that we've had. And then just the last thing, I'm so, I'm so very, very grateful that the Huntington alumni did come out this evening, and it was very encouraging to see you all come out. We appreciate you all coming out and lending your voice to Huntington. Because while I've been on the board, I was, I did become somewhat disheartened, and I said, wow, does, do folks really care about Huntington? Because it's been, every year I've been on the board, we voted to either replace or renovate Huntington, every year. And it seemed like nobody cared, because it would get rejected in the budget, and we, you know, in our capital improvement budget, it would get rejected, and nobody seemed to ever pipe up or say anything. So it's so, so very encouraging to see you all now, because it is certainly far from, the fight for Huntington certainly is, is far from over. There's certainly more than enough time to, to, to make Huntington a priority and get, get the proper renovations or replacement done for Huntington. I know that, just a quick anecdote, like I've been through the school and, and the, the condition is, is, is what it is in terms of, we as a board, and thinking about my own children, I want my own children to go there, it's now moved into that condition where I wouldn't want my own kids going there, and we need to, we need to move it to a condition where we want anyone's children to go there. Been in there, if you've been in there in the summertime, went there for a visit, and it was so hot, and walking down the one of the hallways, it was so hot, it was, it was like, it was like a hundred and twenty degrees, it was so oppressively hot, I just started sweating through my suit. And I said to, pulled to one of the administration, said, hey, you knew I was, I'm on the board, you knew I was coming today, right? Why, you couldn't turn on the air conditioner? Oh, well, Mr. Brown, the air conditioner doesn't work in this section of the building. You know, it, the air conditioner is so old, they don't even make parts for it anymore. So we're, we're in a situation, you got, you're, you're just, this is what, getting twenty percent of the budget, when the school division owns nearly seventy percent of the real estate in the city, this is what it looks like. This is, this is what it looks like. You cannot, you cannot go on for a sustained length of time, getting twenty, roughly twenty percent of the budget when we own seventy percent of the real estate. This is what, this is what inevitably happens, is that you can only squeeze so much, and decisions have to ultimately be made that are in the best interest of children. So what we, you know, what needs to happen is we need to remedy that situation, we need to, we need to reverse that, we need to change that. And I'm so encouraged that you all come out tonight, because now I know that folks in the community really do care, really do care about Huntington and care about remedying and reversing that situation. We have to, we have to change that, that situation. We have to turn things around, and we can do that together. So I'm very encouraged tonight, and I'm leaving out here charged up and energized for what you all are gonna continue to apply, appropriate your voice to the, to these issues.[1795.16] And know that it's not just Huntington that is in this situation. We had an independent assessment, it's something I pushed very hard for, I appreciate Dr. Kilgore supported in getting it done. We had our independent assessment done by an architect, I pushed hard for that, took more than a year to add an independent architect, do a study, and our facility needs are great. I tell people all the time, it's gonna cost roughly $70 million just to move kids out of trailers. We have more than 100 classrooms that are in trailers across the school division. It's gonna cost nearly $70 million just to move kids out of trailers. Okay? HVAC systems, roofs, all of that is...it's not just Huntington, okay? It's not just Huntington, but Huntington just has to...happens to be in the worst condition right now, where we can no longer ignore its condition and must move forward. The budget process, so you all know, is...because this is something that I didn't fully understand before I got on the board, so I wouldn't expect the public necessarily to understand. It's just the operating budget and the capital budget are different budgets. Okay? The capital budget, we as a school board, we offer projects to the city and make requests, and then the city decides whether or not they're going to fund those projects. We have offered up Huntington as a project to the city, and the city has said, "No, you don't need to fund that project." So that's why...that's where we are now, today.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Sajal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight is a big night, and so with big things, I have learned to write down your comments, so that you don't get carried away and then forget. So tonight, I'd like to take a few moments to recognize the long and what I consider to be courageous career of our superintendent, Dr. Ashby Kilgore. I came to know Dr. Kilgore about eight years ago, when I was elected to the school board, and when one takes on a role like that, you naturally approach it with some skepticism, and you have a little proving out period, and that worked itself out really quickly. In the first year working together, this is what I came to find out about our Dr. Kilgore. She is straightforward about her positions. She takes on the long view, hers and yours, even if you weren't thinking of the consequences. I learned that firsthand. She is cautious like a cat with things that could really cause controversy for the school division. She is quick to act when there's urgency, risk, or opportunity for our children or our programs. She is as tough as anyone would expect of a chief executive officer, especially of herself. She's reluctant to react in the moment and takes time to consider an issue before she acts. She combines instinct and reason in deliberating an issue. Most of us just respond and react. She's guided by this great sense of what is right, what is right for the division, what's right for our children, and what's right for our city. What is the right thing to do for those children who have the least? That's what you find when you sit with Ashby, day in and day out, month in and month out. She's guided by an ethic of fairness. She's motivated that all children can make it. And when you find that out, you're willing to put up with a lot of the atmospherics of the toughness of her side of her chemistry. She's absolutely intolerant of a lack of commitment. She's challenging to those who don't see that it's all about children. She's resilient when it takes another try to get the darned thing done. She recognizes that there's a time to push for a goal, and she recognizes when it's time to work together and compromise. She's willing to take the high road. She is not willing to leave any unexpended effort on the field. Dr. Ashby Kilgore has made Newport News Public School Division a very strong and very successful place where children can grow and thrive in their walk to become young adults and take control of their own lives. I don't think anybody could say a better thing about a leader in this business. Newport News has been blessed by her unwavering commitment as a teacher, principal, assistant superintendent, and superintendent over her long and productive career. We are better for her contribution. She has given us a standard to judge all who will follow her as leaders in Newport News Public Schools. Thank you.
Mr. Sajal. Mr. Ely?
Thank you. I'd like to take this time first of all to thank Huntington alumni for coming out. Y'all made a lot of great points, and I will continue to work with y'all to make sure y'all visions and dreams are seen with Huntington Middle School. I also like to thank Huntington Middle School Choir and Band Presentation, I went there to their concert, and it was amazing. Those young kids put on a great show, and I just wanna thank their principal, even the principal, she did a performance with the kids, and the energy at Huntington now is still alive and is still thriving, and the kids were very excited to be there. I also like to thank Ted Consulton. We did a Christmas event, we did a back-to-school event, back-to-school, but then we did a Christmas event at Doris on the Community Center this last past Saturday, and we was able to give out over 600 toys and gifts to so many children in the eastern community. It was so exciting to see the kids and be able to help families that are less fortunate. Also, I'd like to congratulate our fellow board member, Shelley Simons. She will be...continue to go to the House of Delicates and fight for education. I know she's a great lady, she's a great leader, and she loves children, and she loves people, and I really believe she's gonna do a great job in the House of Delicates. And I'd like to say happy holidays, everybody. Drive safe, have a good time, enjoy your loved ones, be safe, and have fun. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. And next we have Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to start out first by saying congratulations to the young folks that came up and spoke. You did a great job, and continue those efforts. Also, I just wanna make sure the board continues to take a look at the bullying policy and also bus stops. I think we hear this all the time, at least I do, I get a lot of phone calls about it. Safety is our first priority for our kids, okay? Huntington alumni, even though I'm not from the state of Virginia, I'm from Mississippi, I completely understand the actions that you all have taken on. I also just wanna reiterate that, I think a couple of board members hit on it, that we do not generate our own funds. Mr. Douglas Brown made a good point, and it is fact, federal, state, and local funds. So we have, I've only been on board since 2016, but the previous board members have submitted capital improvement for Huntington. That was the first thing they briefed me on. So what I ask you to do is to continue to take this energy, but the next stop should be, I think, 2500 Washington Street. I think that's the location of the city council chambers. And to just reiterate what you have done here, that, you know, the school board needs your support on maintaining Huntington or whatever decision we decide, but I wanna make sure that they are also briefed by you all, okay? Last but not least, to Dr. Kilgore. I know a strong leader when I see one. We both have two strong personalities, but when I first met Dr. Kilgore, and you hear a lot of things prior to, you know, coming on the board, so I knew she was a strong leader, and I knew that she led by example, which was one of the first things that, you know, I noticed, one of the first things that I was looking for. And those things are honed over years and years and years of dedication to a craft. She has been loyal to the system of education. She has executed her assignments, I mean duty, which means that, you know, without anyone looking, she does the right thing. She has garnered respect, just not from her staff and administration, but also from the public and parents. Selfless service is one of those things that either you have it or you don't, and she has displayed that since I have known her. Also, integrity, which is a washing word that everyone should, you know, carry to the forefront. She means what she says, or she mean what she says, she says what she mean, and I respected her for that. A lot of the times, we probably didn't see eye to eye, but I can respect a person that tells it like it is, and to be honest with you, and I appreciate that about you, Dr. Kilgore. And last but not least, moral and personal courage. Those are two of the toughest ones, because there's a lot of times, especially in her situation, probably faced with issues, that if you do not have physical and moral courage, then the whole system collapses. And it is one of those things that you can see by the production of the kids and staff that is willing to go above and beyond the call of duty. I'm sure she has mentored the Mr. Nichols in a way that I don't think we will see any lapse, and that is what great leaders do, they mentor the ones behind them to take their place or step in when necessary. So again, I just wanna reiterate, thank you publicly for the job we have done, and I've heard some rumors that you probably still be hanging around the city somewhere, doing great things, and we look forward to...
Maybe my pajamas are...
So we look forward to seeing you around, okay? Appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Harris, and Mr. Ashby.
Well, my comments will be very brief, because I got to share records after the Huntington alumni presented. I also wanted to just commend and compliment the young people that spoke tonight, you were just simply totally awesome. And my last thing will be a statement and a hug or gesture. My statement is, I got on the board in 2006, here it is 2017, and I can honestly say or ask this question. And the question is, are the children of Newport News Public Schools better off today than they were in 2006? C, C, case closed. So my last gesture is, I'm gonna ask the superintendent to stand up. And I just wanna give a big, big hug.
Okay, very nice. And so as you saw, I deviated a little bit from the agenda. Normally, we have her comments from the superintendent. I guess this is mine, this last, I wrote a lot of stuff, but I'm not sure if I'm gonna read it all, nonetheless, or someone wrote it for me, or helped me write it. Nonetheless, great things are happening in Newport News school system. Let me give you another hand. This is just wonderful, 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 wonderful report, the Student Council Association. And again, to our person that's missing on the board that was here today, congratulations to Ms. Simon on how she achieves another step in her career in making students' lives better here and for our citizens and our students here in Virginia. Again, thank you to the Huntington alumnus and those who are associated with Huntington. And just for the record, just wanna let you know about that resolution again, to get it straight and get it clear. Again, a few more facts again, it was built in 1936, it's a high school. 1981, it became a middle school. The building has continually deteriorated. It's been in RCIP budget since 2010. It has not been funded. We had an independent architect do a study on all of our buildings. HVAC system, 1.6, $11.6 million to get that done, and about $7.6 million for other major spendings and renovations, just to bring that school up to, as one of my board members says, "My daughter allow my daughters to attend there." And so it's gonna be in two stages, and you heard, we've authorized the superintendent, now the acting superintendent, to go out and perform this study. February 20th, 2018, the first report comes back, basically is saying, is there a need to have the students transfer for the 2018, 2019 school year because of the deteriorating condition of that school? The school is deplorable. I'm just gonna out...I'm just gonna go out and tell you, that school is deplorable when it comes to a learning environment. I mean, I was appalled, as Mr. Brown said, the first day of school, we got there and I smelled the air conditioning, and I says, "Is that the air conditioner smell? Really? Really?" So that's gonna be the first. Then the second phase, that's not due until March 1st, 2019, and then we're going to determine with the public input and the city input, what best to do with that particular school. Do we renovate it? Do we tear it down? Is there a combination of both? We've heard a lot of great ideas, getting universities involved, getting the shipyard involved, getting other businesses in the city, making it a career, making it a STEM school, and so I believe there will be something there. I hear you. I believe our board members hear you. What's gonna be there, we're going to inject that duty, you know, this is your city, you have to go to...come to the school board and keep us in check or keep us abreast, and then also, there's also a city council that also you need to go out and speak as well, because that's where we get our money from. That's where we get our money from. The state, a little bit from the Fed, and the city. So we have to, and I'm here, and I'm sure this board will work together with our city council to do what's best for our school and do what's best for Huntington. So that's my take on that, okay? Last but not least, after 10 years of dedicated service, Dr. Kilgore announced her retirement in October. What she's gonna do with her next phase of her life, I'm not sure what she's gonna do that, but I wanna take this moment publicly to thank her for her dedication and leadership. Here's a really brief synopsis of what she's done. This school's division advanced and excelled, career pathways, youth development, early college, Spark, many more programs that launched were very successful. Our students are making better strides and greater progress on the challenging SOL test. Our graduation rate this year was at an all-time high. Our dropout rate, guess what? Amongst the lowest in the state. Dr. Kilgore, we thank you for your service to Newport News Public Schools and our students. So my fellow board members and I are committed to ensuring that your legacy continues with our next superintendent. So in the interim, the school board is looking forward to working with our acting superintendent, Brian Nichols. Brian, please stand up, just in case someone doesn't know who you are. I'm sure to say, I've met with Brian for about a couple hours, and we had a phenomenal meeting. I think it's gonna be very smooth, a very smooth transition. Brian, as we said again, this board is looking forward to picking up exactly where she left off, okay? So thank you. The board, we all know, will be utilizing the VSBA, Virginia School Board Association, to assist us in this search. Hiring a new superintendent for us, it's six of us on the board, we're gonna have to find another person, it seems to be, if the signature comes true in a week or so. That's one of our largest and one of our most important decisions that a board will ever face, and we're committed to this community, and we're gonna ensure that our families and our staff and the community have an opportunity to be involved in the process. And so before we accept any application, we want you, and we want you to know, that we want you to know what you feel, what's the qualifications and your opinion, what you would like to see in our next superintendent. So the families and staff and community members will be invited to provide input during two public hearings. The first one is gonna be Tuesday, January 10th, I mean, January 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, and the second one will be at a school board meeting, which will be also Tuesday, January 16th, 2018. Both will be right here in this auditorium. And on January 3rd through January 21st, there will be an online survey that we're asking each one of you to go out, it'll be on, I'm sure it'll be on the school site, we'll probably put it to libraries, it'll be at many places. So we need each one of our, each and every one of our citizens, just like they came out here for Huntington, to go up on that website and to fill that survey out. I mean, this is gonna be your superintendent, the city superintendent. So we asked for that... I mean, this is gonna be your superintendent, the city superintendent, so we ask for that. And then there'll be another opportunity later on in the process, in March or so, for us to get an opportunity to hear from you again. So we look forward to hearing from you, and we will keep you informed as we work through and in the search for our new superintendent. And that being said, it's been a long night, I'm looking forward to the holiday, it's the holiday season, I want everyone to be very, very safe out there, I want you to enjoy the holidays, and I want you to have, and we're wishing everyone a prosperous and exciting and a successful New Year. And before we do, that's my part, and before we do that, that's what I'm gonna say, I'm gonna turn the floor over to our illustrious superintendent for her last meeting, Dr. Kilgore, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, I just have some brief comments, 'cause I know I am standing in the way of you going home, so, just, tonight for me is a night of gratitude, and there are lots of people for me to be thankful to. I think one is to this board and the community for letting me lead this school system for 10 years. I think secondly, to the families in Newport News for trusting us with the best thing you've got in your family every day and sending them to our school. Thirdly, to the staff in Newport News who's devoted, they're experts, but they're still smart enough to know we don't know everything, I'm gonna figure the next thing out. And, and lastly, and probably most important, as we saw tonight, gratitude to our kids for being delightful, I think, to being curious, and also for getting smarter every day that you spend in Newport News Public Schools. So that whole partnership of all those people to be thankful for, we all joined up together 10 years ago and said, what can we do in Newport News? And I think you heard tonight, what we've done in terms of opening doors for kids, in terms of getting our kids ready, I don't, I didn't wanna do this, getting them ready for big things, and I think we have accomplished a whole lot. You heard about early college, you heard about career pathways tonight, our, we've got one of the smartest curriculums anywhere, we have one of the most energy efficient and operationally efficient organizations that you could look at, there's, that's this big. We've got, we've expanded our early childhood, we've got more kids reading, and they're reading, like, not baby books, but important books, and books that they pick, and things that they like. And, and I think most of all, we've altered how we see young people to know that they are self-directed, they can run the show, and, and they can really be big people when they're in here in Newport News, and there's never a time that we didn't, when we expected our kids to be self-directed and smart, they lived up to that, and, I mean, God, they overlived up to that, didn't they? So their expectations never can be as big as you all are, and I just appreciate knowing that about kids. We've done a lot, there's a lot to do, it's a big school division, it's a big community, and there's lots and lots of wonderful things that will happen, that's what I'm gonna miss the most, is the next big thing and the exciting work. So my only charge is maybe two or three things. Number one, number one, continue to push our students, continue to make each other smarter, all of us that work here together, and continue to invent the next big strategies, strategy or strategies that's gonna get our kids ready for college careers and for citizenship, and just know that I'm gonna miss you. Thank you. All right, thank you all so much. I did good the whole meeting.
Well, that being said, she has the last word on that, this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
Thank you all.